Time is 7:00 PM on September 15th, 2015. Would you please rise to the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Our first item on the agenda is our honors, awards, and recognitions. And Mrs. Blackburn, if you'll do the honors.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. I believe Dr. Staton is going to be sitting in up front while we do the recognitions this evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're now ready to begin our recognition for this evening, our honors and award recognitions. And I'll ask Jennifer Weaver, our Director of Secondary Education, to come forward to introduce the Seniors of the Month.
Good evening. Tonight, we have four diverse and exciting seniors that you'll be pleased to meet tonight. All four principals are here, so we'll begin with Mr. Polly.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Dr. Staton, Ms. Blackburn, Chairman Lyons, and members of the board. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce you to our September Senior of the Month for Auburn High School, Morgan Church. She's here this evening with her father, Joe, and if they would come forward at this time to be recognized. I know that you have Morgan's profile in front of you, and you can see the many activities and awards and accomplishments that she has added to her name through her four years of high school. And I would just like to read a brief statement that's a combination of statements from all of Morgan's teachers. Morgan's teachers consistently describe her as "an intellectually inquisitive, exuberant, articulate, and exceptionally creative young woman, whose enthusiasm for learning within and beyond the classroom, strong work ethic, keen sense of humor, wonderful personality, humility, courage, and creativity is authentic and always memorable." I'm proud to have Morgan Church to be Auburn High School's Senior of the Month.
Brenda, there we go. Good evening. It is a great tradition at Blacksburg High School that as the principal, I get to select the first senior of the month for this school year. I'm proud to introduce you this evening to Ms. Eden Elizabeth Phillips, who's accompanied by Dad John and Mom Nancy. Would you all please come forward? This young lady is very special. She is the president of the largest student body in Montgomery County Public Schools with 1,183 students. She leads by example with a 4.4 GPA. And in addition to being an outstanding student, she is also an outstanding athlete and has two state championship soccer rings to prove it, serving as one of the captains on last year's team. This young lady just found out some very exciting news last week. She has been accepted to attend West Point. Blacksburg High School is proud to present our September Senior of the Month, Ms. Eden Elizabeth Phillips. Dr. Staton, Ms. Blackburn, members of the board. It is with great pleasure that I introduce to you Christiansburg High School's September Senior of the Month, Ms. Rachel Polly. She is accompanied this evening by her father, Carl Polly, her mother, Teresa Polly, and her grandparents. Would you please come forward at this time? Rachel was selected as our first senior of the month because she is energetic, intelligent, and a friendly student who possesses a great work ethic and keen sense of humor. She is a strong athlete and talented musical performer who represents CHS well in a variety of venues. All of this seems more amazing when you consider her paternal lineage. We are very proud to present to you Ms. Rachel Polly. Ms. Blackburn, Mr. Lyons, members of the board. It's with great pride that I introduce to you Eastern Montgomery High School's September Senior of the Month, Ms. Cassidy Ray Broom. She's accompanied tonight by her mother and father, Randy and Melissa Broom. If you guys would come and join me. EMHS Biology teacher Melanie Kirby had this to say about Cassidy. "It has been my extreme pleasure to have had the opportunity to teach Cassidy and coach Cassidy for the last three years. She is every teacher's dream student. She is hardworking, talented, naturally gifted, and goal-oriented in the classroom as well as on the sports field. I am very confident that she will have a bright and successful future." We are too. Congratulations.
And now, Mr. Lyons will recognize Ms. Blackburn, our departing superintendent.
Mrs. Blackburn, why don't you come on over here and join me, if you would, please? You're just about done. Just about.
Finished.
Finished. We want to take this time to recognize you, and for your last five and a half-plus years of service, it's been a tremendous, you've been a tremendous blessing to this county, and we wish you many blessings upon your new adventures in life. And we want to present to you, and I'm going to read this just so that everyone knows what it says. "Montgomery County Public Schools presents to Brenda B. Blackburn in grateful recognition of her service to Montgomery County Public Schools as Division Superintendent from March 2010 to September 2015." Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I want to ask the board members, if they would, starting with Ms. Franklin, if they would like to share anything.
I want to wish you well, and it's public knowledge. You and I sometimes don't agree.
Your kid.
But I want to thank you for, one of the things that I will remember and the most is the technology that you've bought into the district. Our trip to Auburn Elementary School and watching the children use that technology and then allowing us board members to try to kind of figure it out too was just wonderful. So I thank you for that, and best wishes.
My turn. Brenda, I wish you the best. From the time that you interviewed to come on board with us, I knew when you had given each one of us some information that might could improve on some of the things we were doing, I went, oh, that's her. That is exactly who we need for our county. You've done a phenomenal job. You came in with a hardship to have to bear that most people couldn't have done. As Penny mentioned, you know, we all have differences and differences of opinions, but I think for the betterment of the county, we all learned how to work together and work through them. I know you're going to do great things where you're going, and I wish you the best.
Well, I would like to say thank you, when I was in the PTA, of having the PTA Presidents' Meetings, because I felt like that gave us a voice to you personally, and I know I respected having the time with you and to meet with the other PTA Presidents and discuss things, and I thought it was very beneficial, so I appreciate that you organized that, and I wish you well.
Well, it has been great pleasure. I wish we had more years to work with, but it has been great two years, get to know you and work with you. And I remember when February 13, 2010, we had the roof collapse, and knowing that our new superintendent will be starting March 1st, 2010, I was so sure that person will never come. But you definitely, you know, proved otherwise and had tough times and the great times. It has been, it has been great five and a half years for the county. You'll be missed. Hopefully, we'll stay in touch and wish you the best, and good luck with the bigger county and lot of students.
Five and a half years ago, when you arrived and the roof collapsed, parents went through hardships, teachers went through hardships, everybody went through hardships except for students. Proof of the pudding was that students accomplished more that year than they had the year before and continued to accomplish and achieve and excel. So the roof collapsing did nothing but gear you up for bigger and better things, and our students received wonderful things because of that. I've had the honor of, as most people know, I'm a lifelong educator, and I have had the honor of working with and for seven different superintendents. And I have not had the opportunity to work with anybody other than you, who I would want to work with more and more. It's just been wonderful, and if I could follow you down to South Carolina, I would do that, somehow get on the board and see if we could continue the relationship that we have. It's just been a grand five and a half years, and I will miss you dearly.
Well, a lot of people have talked about that roof, and that's definitely what got me started in this boardroom out there, and somehow I ended up here. But during that period, you've taught me a lot about the school system and how a board member works, and I really appreciate it, and we will miss you, and we wish you the best of luck, and think of us when we're having some snow days that have to be determined, and you have sundays.
Or hurricanes.
I'll just say in closing, I want to say thank you for breaking me in.
My pleasure.
You know, including the last year and a half just being on the board, but especially the last seven or eight months as I've been the chairman, you have done a tremendous job helping me understand both what my role is and asking the right questions and being just out there in front of the public. You've given me great insight, you've given me lots of great advice, and I really appreciate it. Thank you very much. We are going to miss you, and blessings upon you.
Thank you.
He said, "Would you like to say anything?" You know, I'm not often at a loss for words, but tonight I do have some things that I would like to say, and I hope you'll bear with me for a moment and allow me to do that. I'd like to start out by saying, friends, I came here, I knew no one. You've been my friends, you've been my family. Me and Rocco stayed because of you, and those of you who know me, Rocco is my pet. So thank you for recognizing me this evening. It's been an honor for me to lead such a dynamic and committed school system. Collectively, this is an organization of amazing people. It is hard to believe that I have served as your superintendent for five and a half years. I arrived on a snowy winter March in 2000, winter, wintery day in March of 2010. Having just left Florida, my pup, Rocco, and I wondered, what had we done? Those thoughts quickly passed as we engaged with the wonderful people of Montgomery County. Although I have a strong belief in the power of the individual, I have always felt that "we" has so much more power than "I." So tonight, I will briefly reflect on what "we" have accomplished. The "we" that I see includes our wonderful students, our parents, our teachers, and employees at every level of support and instruction throughout the organization, a caring community, a dedicated school board, and a very supportive Board of Supervisors. So when I reflected, and some of the things you've mentioned are things that I reflected on, "We" have maintained a laser-like focus on preparing every child for a bright future, including college and career-ready skills. "We" have survived the economic downturn, the worst that I have ever seen in my 40-plus years in education. "We" established the 21st century classroom concept that Ms. Franklin spoke of. "We" implemented a one-to-one tablet initiative that's in its second year this year. We thought we could not do it, but we've done it. "We" rebranded the division through the website, the comprehensive plan, the mission and the vision of this school division to engage, encourage, and empower. "We" weathered the storm of the loss of Blacksburg High School. Now, should I have come? Maybe not, but you know, I did, so we weathered that storm. "We" revitalized the old CMS building to house Blacksburg Middle School. "We" moved 3,000 people one summer. "We" funded, designed, staffed, and opened three new schools, AMS, AHS, and BHS, using a new and complex PPEA process that gave us a very aggressive timeline for opening those schools. We did it on time and in budget. "We" built, staffed, and opened two new elementary schools, Prices Fork Elementary School and Eastern Montgomery Elementary School. "We" focused on safety and security at every Montgomery County Public School site. "We" moved the division to a technology-based board agenda process that supports transparency for the public. "We" developed a systematic focus on social justice and diversity for students and adults in our school system. "We" celebrate the best, this year, the best academic performance of our students since the implementation of more rigorous standards. "We" celebrate this year, for the first time ever, every single elementary school met the federal accountability standards, or at least what we think they're going to be. "We" celebrate this year, 19 of 19 schools fully accredited in math, and 18 of 19 schools fully accredited in English. "We" celebrate every day the opportunity to make a difference for teaching and learning in Montgomery County. Again, my thanks for allowing me to be a part of this great organization. No matter where I go, I will be watching to see what you do next, and thank you for being my home away from home, my friends and my family. Thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute break so the board members can come down and wish congratulations to Mrs. Blackburn and our Seniors of the Month. I do want the board members first to gather up here in the front. We're going to take a picture of Mrs. Blackburn altogether, if you don't mind. On our agenda is our public address time. At each of our regularly scheduled board meetings, the Montgomery County Public School Board allows up to 30 minutes for members of the community, staff, and students to address this board on matters concerning public education in Montgomery County. Each speaker is given a maximum of three minutes to speak. There will be timers around the room on the screens for your viewing pleasure. When you come up, please state your name and your address, and then your three minutes will begin. At this point, I only have one person signed up, and I will call them to the board now, Robbie Jones.
Good evening. My name is Robbie Jones. I live at 996 Cole Holler Road in Christiansburg, Virginia. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. On behalf of the Montgomery County Education Association, I would like to thank Ms. Blackburn for her years of, oh gosh, there's so many words I could use, constant guidance. I mean, it's just everything, leadership. I really want to thank you for everything you've contributed to the county, all of the students and the employees as well. And so, thank you. I wish you best of luck in Old Chuck Town, so we have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. As I stated before, Mrs. Jones was the only one on the sign-up sheet. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the board this evening? Seeing no one, public address is closed. Moving on to consent items, unless any board member has anything that they would like to address or pull from consent, we will consider consent items approved. Anything? Very good. Moving on to our personnel report. May I have a motion to accept the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Personnel report is approved. Next on the agenda is the payment of the bills. May I have a motion to pay the bills?
I move we pay the bills.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Bills have been paid. Next on the agenda is the financial summary report. May I have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the financial summary report?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Financial summary report is approved. Now, next on the agenda is superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcements, and with that, I will turn it over to Mrs. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. It is that time of the year, but as you know, things go, things change. And so, tonight, we're going to be presenting preliminary accountability data, because the state has delayed their announcement of official federal accountability or state accountability until October 27th. But we believe the data that we have to share with you this evening is reliable, and so we're going to move forward and share that. And we've asked, or I've asked, Lois Graham, Jennifer Weaver, and Carol Jennings to please provide an update on state accreditation and federal accountability based on the preliminary data this evening. With that, I'll turn it over to our presenters.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to discuss preliminary data, state accreditation, and federal accountability. The data was scheduled to be released today, but the state postponed the final presentation of the data until late October.
So, we are pleased and excited to share our results for state accreditation. And first, as you see here on this slide, all Montgomery County schools will be accredited. In the area of math, 19 of 19 schools met the benchmark this time, and 18 of 19 met the mark for reading. This represents our best results since 2011, and all elementary schools earned full accreditation. Very proud of those.
At the secondary level, we're pleased that all secondary schools exceeded the math benchmark for state accreditation for the first time since 2011. Seven of eight schools will be fully accredited. Shawsville Middle School met the state accreditation benchmark in math, but did not beat the benchmark in English. As often happens at the state level, the rules of the game are changing once again. As Carol mentioned earlier, the state has delayed releasing official accreditation ratings until late October. We anticipate that the new terminology will result in Shawsville Middle School being partially accredited, rather than accredited with warning terminology that you're familiar with. We don't have enough details from the state to know exactly how this will impact school improvement at Shawsville Middle, but this change may be a positive one for us. We're also pleased that all four high schools met the state accreditation benchmark for graduation.
So, moving to federal accountability, where the rules are different and the rules are ever-changing. There's a high likelihood that the rules will be changing again as ESA is reauthorized. But currently, for elementary schools to meet federal accountability, there are 36 benchmarks, and federal accountability also includes the nine subgroups. This year, I'm very pleased to share that all elementary schools met federal accountability. This is a significant accomplishment. It is an increase from nine schools last year to all schools this, all elementary schools this year. It is the first time that all elementary schools have met federal accountability.
At the secondary level, we're very pleased that Auburn Middle School has made federal accountability for three years in a row. We'd also like to congratulate Eastern Montgomery High School, who met all federal accountability benchmarks this year after missing a benchmark last year. Six secondary schools did not meet all federal accountability benchmarks. The federal government doesn't award partial credit. You have to meet all benchmarks to be awarded accountability. At the middle school level, there are 36 different benchmarks to meet, and at the high school level, there are 45 benchmarks to meet. You'll notice that the high schools did not meet federal accountability as a result of missing the graduation benchmark. As you just heard me say a few slides before, we did meet the state graduation rate benchmark. That's because at the federal level, they only recognized two of the Virginia diplomas, the Advanced Studies and the Standard Diploma. They don't recognize the diplomas awarded to our students with disabilities. It also is lagging a year behind in data, so the federal graduation data is based on a one-year earlier cohort than the state graduation data is based on.
So if you're saying, if we had given it, if we didn't give that third diploma, we would have been okay with our graduation?
Yeah, the issue is that the benchmark is very similar for the federal graduation rate and the state graduation rate, but they don't account for all Virginia diplomas. In Virginia, we award several diplomas, and they only account, the federal government only recognizes two of them.
Well, I personally think we do the right thing.
As Dr. Graham just indicated, there are nine subgroups for federal accountability, and they're listed for you here. In order for a subgroup to be counted in a division or in a school, the subgroup must have at least 30 students. In math, each group, subgroup started out in 2011, 2012 with a different benchmark, based on statewide data. However, by 2016, 2017, the benchmark for all subgroups is the same, and for math, that is 73%. You see highlighted in green, gap group one and disadvantaged students. They are highlighted because the benchmarks for gap group one and disadvantaged students are the same. The column highlighted in tan is the benchmark each subgroup had to meet in 2014, 15. For English, each subgroup started out in 2012, 2013 with a different benchmark, based again on statewide data. You will notice that by 2016, 2017, the benchmark for all subgroups is the same. For English, the benchmark is 78%. Gap group one and gap, I'm sorry, gap group one and disadvantaged students are again highlighted in green, because the benchmarks for gap group one and disadvantaged students are the same. And the column highlighted in blue is the benchmark each subgroup had to meet in 2014, 2015. In the past, we've shown In the past, we've shown you this data comparing Montgomery County with the state data. However, the state has not released their federal accountability status, so we don't have that comparison yet. But look at all the green that we have for 2014, 15. We are very proud that we met all of those benchmarks. Although our students with disabilities made gains this past year, they did not quite come up high enough to meet the benchmark. And you will remember that the benchmark is ever-changing.
Another question. The Asian group is, am I correct? Okay. Have we come up with a diagnosis of this, or whatever you want to call it, that the reason for that is because the parents value education much more? Is there a reason other than that that we can think of that puts them up in the stratosphere like that?
In fact, we would all venture to say that could be a part of it. It's a small group.
So, there really hasn't been any studies as to why that's happening?
I have not read a study.
I, I have not read a study.
Should be worth looking at, wouldn't it?
So, we're moving on now. We wanted to look at our longitudinal data for the division since 2012. And as you can see, we have the desired trajectory for all students. This is the all-student subgroup we're looking at. Reading is the top line, with reading scores being slightly higher than math. Our scores continue to rise in both areas. Math scores increased almost seven percentage points this year, and reading increased just over five percentage points for the all-student subgroup. As a division, we surpassed the benchmark in both areas.
Next, we wanted to show you how the two subgroups that didn't meet federal accountability last year fared this year. As you can see, the chart on the left shows the black subgroup. You can see they also have a positive trajectory, an increase in reading of almost eight percent, and in math of over twelve percent. Students in the subgroup made progress from last year, they met the federal benchmark this year, and they're closing the gap with all students. On the right-hand side, you can see our students with disability. Those student subgroup also made progress from last year, improving over five percent in math and two percent in reading. Although they're moving in a positive direction, the gap did not close quickly enough to meet the benchmark for this year.
This bar graph is another way to look at the information that we just presented on the line graphs. The green line shows the 2016, 2017 benchmark for all subgroups. The stars indicate the benchmarks divisions and schools had to meet for testing in the 2014, 2015 school year. All students subgroup and the black student subgroup met the benchmark. Although students with disabilities made gains, the gains were not large enough to meet the benchmark.
You said the green line was the benchmark?
For 2016, 2017. And the stars indicate the, this past year's benchmark. And you see a very similar graph here for reading. The red line indicates the 2016, 2017 benchmark, that we all have to be in by that time for all subgroups. And again, the stars are the benchmarks that schools and divisions had to meet for testing this past year in order to make, meet federal accountability. And again, you'll see that all students and the black students met the benchmark. And again, although the students with disabilities made gains, they were not quite enough to meet the benchmark. So, in the world of education, it's always a game of continuous improvement. We always want to keep moving forward. So, what are our goals? We want to earn full accreditation as we move forward for all nineteen schools. And as you saw earlier, we're certainly moving in a positive direction. We want to continue the implementation of the Model for Effective Instruction. We think that's paramount. Focusing on the six areas within the model and ensuring that teachers and administrators have a sustained focus is helping us to define and concentrate on how to implement instructional practices that help students increase learning. And we want to continue this upward trajectory of subgroup performance in meeting the federal accountability. We continue to have work to do. Are we making gains? Certainly, we are, but we must keep the focus on our subgroups and continue to strive to close all of our gaps.
As Dr. Graham mentioned, we always want to keep a focus on continuous improvement, but we also wanted to take a moment to celebrate the things that went very well this year. From a state accreditation perspective, we're very pleased that eighteen of nineteen schools met the reading benchmark. And we're even more pleased to celebrate that nineteen of nineteen schools met the math benchmark. This is the first time since 2011 that all schools met the math benchmark. As I shared last meeting, this is an accomplishment that highlights the hard work and the teamwork that many people engaged with to meet these benchmarks. From a federal accountability perspective, we're very proud that we're consistently making progress with all of our subgroups, and that eight of nine subgroups are closing the gap and meeting the benchmarks.
Also to celebrate, we certainly want to celebrate that all elementary schools met the federal accountability benchmarks. We're delighted about that. Student performance is a result of the hard work of our administrators, supervisors, and instructional staff. With the support of all our support staff, we are pleased to see continued gains, and we're excited to continue the work to impact student growth. Certainly, a significant piece of our growth comes back to our work with professional development. A hundred percent of our teachers participated in professional development, which was designed to support increased engagement and student achievement. The work is worthwhile, and we see it in our student growth. And as you'll see, based on their preliminary information, reading will be ranked in the top quartile statewide. We think that's a significant accomplishment, which celebrates the PD that we've done. And math will be ranked in the top thirty percent statewide. So, we, we have celebrations. We are proud of the preliminary data and the gains that we made this year, but we never think that our work is done. You will be able to go to the two websites shown on this page to view more information about federal accountability and state accreditation, but I would like to point out that the, the data will not be updated until the end of October, when the state officially releases their data.
Any questions, board members?
Well, I would just like to comment, as I usually do, but the federal accreditation for these elementary schools is absolutely fabulous. This is what I've been waiting for, for many, many years, and I appreciate all the hard work, closing those gaps, narrowing them. You know, I'd like to see what those numbers actually are when they come out, but, you know, great work.
I also want to say that, having been through this for several years now, this is the clearest it's ever been. I think you're, this is not an insult in any way, but I think you're catching up to the smoke and mirrors that the state, or that the state and the feds are giving you, and, and it's coming out more clearly than it has in the past. And thank you for getting those smoke and mirrors cleared up.
Any other questions, board members?
I have one question. Is there, obviously, we have a ways to go for us to get our students with disabilities up to where they're going to need to be in a couple of years. Are there things that we need to do as a board to help you guys accomplish that?
You're already doing some of them. If you'll recall from your carryover plan this year, one of the things that's in there was the additional purchases of some leveled readers for specific locations within the school division. There's some other things that we are strategically paying very close attention to. For example, this year, we actually reconfigured the lead teacher model in the, for special education. And what happened is that five and a half teacher units now are engaging during the school day with direct instruction with special education students, and they are doing the paperwork as a supplemented activity. The, also, Dr. Nelson and Dr. Graham and Ms. Weaver are meeting weekly to talk about the collaboration between special education and general education. At the secondary level, we have increased the seats for students in Read 180 and Math 180, which is proving to be a very powerful intervention for our students. Special Ed also invested quite a bit of money this year in additional technology for both special education teachers and special education students that will support, we believe, some improvements in student achievement there as well. So, we are on it, okay? And doing everything that we feel that, at this point, that we need to do. We need to watch and see what the results of the interventions we have put in place for this year will be. But it is a targeted area for us to pay very close attention to, as well as maintaining the great progress that we've made in other indicators with subgroups this year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarity of the presentation. The next item this evening is an employer-sponsored hybrid 403B plan information and resolution. You'll recall that there've been some fairly significant changes in the opportunity for employees to enroll in a hybrid VRS plan. And one part of that is that employers could become engaged in offering an employee the opportunity to manage their own investment. At this time, Mr. McElandro could perhaps give you some of the details, but the big picture is that we don't recommend that Montgomery County go in that direction yet, because there are too many unanswered questions regarding how the state is going to manage the transfer of funds from the state to these 403Bs, and how school divisions are going to get their money back from the state. So, this is year one, and we discussed it at some length with our advisors, and feel that at this point, we would not recommend the board approve the resolution, but it can come back to you each year for your reconsideration. So, our thought is, we need more information before we could clearly recommend that the board engage in that. And Joe's happy if you'd like some more details to speak to the issue.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. As you recall, there's two sides to the hybrid plan. Employees have a defined contribution and a defined benefit. The defined benefit is similar to what Plan One and Plan Two folks have now. That is, when they retire, they get X amount of dollars when they retire. That's the defined benefit side. The defined contribution is a little different. It's similar to the private sector, is that the employee puts in a certain amount of money, and the employer matches that money. That's the defined contribution side. What this allows, this resolution, is, is for us to opt out of Montgomery County being the employee sponsor of this plan, meaning that we would have the fiduciary responsibility of managing the plan of the 403. So, there's a lot of unanswered questions, like Ms. Blackburn said, about the funneling of the funds right now with the VRS and with our Admin Solutions, who we, right now, is our third-party vendor who we work with, with the 403. Lot of unanswered questions, and knowing that we can bring this back on an annual basis at this time, I would not recommend, and a lot of the other counties that I've talked to as well, are not recommending that we dive into this at this time, that we allow some time for the kinks to be worked out of the system, then look at it again on an annual basis to see if, if the kinks are worked out and we can maneuver it for our employees. It would be a good advantage for our employees in the future if these, if these are worked out. What it does for the employees is allow them more flexibility with their 403Bs to manage it and on more one-to-one basis with a, with a vendor. However, at this time, again, with all the unknowns and how those monies are going to be funneled through the VRS and then back to us, those are the questions that are unanswered right now, and the fee structure.
Do you feel like it will be clearer next year? I mean, what is, what do you think their progress is? Do they understand where the disconnect is?
Yes, ma'am. And again, a lot of the questions that we asked in, in the meetings with the VRS and with the third-party administrator, they're saying, "We can get back to you. We can get back to you on those questions." But we're still waiting on those answers.
No solid answer.
No solid answers, and we have to pass this resolution
Sure.
By, by November 1. So, for me, I'm not comfortable putting forth a, a recommendation to, to the board without having solid answers to some of these fee structures and some of the, how our money is going to be reimbursed to us as well, because we're going to pay the VRS as if the money's going to be put into these funds, but we're actually putting the monies into the funds.
So, if it does come to fruition, what type of options do the employees have as far as the 403B? Like, what fund family do, will it be?
Sure. We would have to set up those with our third-party administrator, which would be, we'd have to set up a third-party administrator. Right now, it's Admin Solutions, and we'd have to put that out to bid and, and look for that to, again, to see who that would be. More than likely, it would be a company similar to Admin Solutions, who, who deals with those third-party administrators and, and deals with those vendors. A lot of companies like Horace Mann, Valek, those companies who deal with those 403Bs and can sit down with the employees one-on-one and tell them what their options are, and, and understand those fiduciary responsibilities that go along with, with funneling those funds.
And they'll have a lot more flexibility for investing?
Yes, ma'am.
Than what they do with the VRS, which is pretty restrictive?
Yes, ma'am. Well, they'll have both. See, they'll have the IM, ICMARC and the ones that we provide. So, they'll have a lot more flexibility and a lot more options available to them. But again, the, it's just too, too many unknowns at this time.
Right.
Any other questions, board members? Is there any penalty for us waiting to do this?
No, sir.
Okay.
And we can make this decision annually. In fact, if we decide one year to say, "We're going to do an employee-sponsored," and then the next year, we decide, "No, we're not going to. We can change it at any time." But it's an annual resolution.
So, do we need to do a resolution to say no?
We will have to do a resolution to say no, but it's information tonight, and it'll be action at your first October meeting.
That's what I, that was my question.
That is a resolution that's attached to the
Right. I see the resolution, so we will have to make a resolution, yea or nay?
That is correct. And the one that's attached to it is saying, "No, we're, we're opting out of this, of the 403 employee-sponsored."
Very good. Any other questions, board members? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Your next item is the second reading of a policy regarding makeup work, which the board had asked staff to review and bring you some potential recommendations. And we reviewed it with you last week, and this week, we're asking that you move this to approval for policy.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, board members?
I would like to have some feedback after a period of time to see, to make sure that, you know, it's not encumbering our teachers and that, and that the policy is working at all the schools. A quarter, half a year, whatever.
Probably after the, end of first semester would be a good, good opportunity to get some feedback.
Right.
Any other comments or questions, board members? All right. We have a motion and a second. Do I need to do road call on this, or is it be okay to do yea or nay? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have a new makeup work policy.
The final, final item I have this evening is Help Save the Next Girl Resolution. Help Save the Next Girl is an organization that promotes personal safety and provides support and works to prevent crimes against women. There are some of our schools that have clubs for Save the Next Girl or initiatives in their school. Some of our schools have selected other causes of interest to that particular student body, but the town of Christiansburg has adopted October as Help Save the Next Girl Month. And the school board is being asked this evening to consider also adopting this month as Save the Next Girl Month. as Save the Next Girl Month.
Do I have a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
So moved. I have a motion and a second, discussion, board members?
Okay. I had a question. How does this open the door for other organizations, other groups to come to us and say, "We want you all to pass the resolution. This is our month. We want you all to do this." Where does this, where does this leave for us? I'm not clear with that.
It, it leaves you that anytime somebody asks that, a board member could initiate, having it placed on the agenda. And just as this one came through, the conversations that Mr. Lyons had with the town of Christiansburg and also some inquiry that he made to board members about interest in doing so. So, even now, you have other groups who have at times asked us to adopt resolutions. So, it would be an individual decision that the board would make.
Okay, because I'm not remembering a group that has asked us.
I can't tell you one right this minute, but I think that there has been one in the time I've been here, but I don't remember what it was right now, but not a usual occurrence. Generally, when we do resolutions, we've done some things like arts in the school and those kind of things that are basically state-driven. But I believe there has been one that we requested to do.
I'm sorry. I believe there ha, I usually do that, so I'm falling off the chair here tonight. I believe there has been one, but without going back and looking, I couldn't tell you, Ms. Franklin, but in the back of my mind, I thought there was one.
I recall.
Do you remember one?
Yes, ma'am, I do. Just within the past few months, we did a resolution that the MCEA brought to us on behalf of the VEA, and it was the Put Kids First Resolution. And it was about lobbying for additional budget money from the state. And that, that's, I think that's the example you were thinking of.
Thank you.
Okay.
You know, I, I don't have a problem approving this, but I think we need to come up with some kind of guidelines. So, when the next one comes, or the next two or three come, that we have something in place to say, "These are our requirements," or "This is what we will or will not, you know, do a resolution on."
We could easily draft something that the board could look at. I would think you would want to place an emphasis on children, education, and those kind of things.
One of the things that really intrigued me personally about this was the fact that we already had students in two high schools who had taken the initiative to do it themselves, which I thought was a tremendous statement. And for me, you know, what the organization is promoting and the fact that we have students who are willing to jump on board and to do it, I feel as a school board, it's a great idea for us to support them with a public resolution.
The, the, yes, except the two schools that have this do not have Save the Next Girl Month. They are doing it all year. I'm not thinking that I want to do this for a month. I want to do it, I mean, it's, it's, it's ongoing. It's not something that we're going to think about for a month.
Well, I think the rec.
But, yeah, I'm not, I'm just making that statement. And, and I think that, that if we're going to do a resolution, we should do a resolution that's going to take in the whole scope of the, of the thing, so that, but anyway, that's where I'm coming from.
Well, I do think that, I, I think it is showing support for the year-long program. I think just the fact that there is a movement within the county to recognize it for a month, I think we're just stating support of that. That's kind of my feeling about it. And, you know, I, I think it is actually a good thing, so. Any other comments or questions? All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of supporting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? We support the Help Save the Next Girl Resolution.
That concludes my agenda.
Okay. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. Any board members have any unfinished business they would like to bring to the table? Hearing none, I will move to new business. Do any board members have any new business that they would like to bring?
I do. I move that we appoint Kevin Kastner as the interim superintendent for Montgomery County Public Schools effective October 1st, 2015.
I'll second that.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Do, um, do we need to tell the public?
Who this person is?
I will, and just soon as we approve it, I'm going to, I'm going to make.
Okay.
Okay.
Shouldn't it be done before you approve it?
What's that?
Before we approve it, shouldn't we say, "This is how we came to this conclusion"? I don't know.
Uh, uh, we'll do it afterwards. If we're appro, we're approving it, and we can tell them afterwards.
Okay.
All right. So, I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bond?
Yes.
Mrs. Franklin?
No.
Mrs. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Ivors?
No.
Uh, Ms. Coran?
Yes.
Ms. Wilsey?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes. So, with that action, Dr. Kevin Kastner is now, will be now serving as our interim superintendent effective October 1st, 2015. The way that we came across to this decision were a series of meetings. We interviewed candidates. We put it out there, both with our, just in the community, we, some of us as the board members, asked for suggestions for folks to run or be, apply for this position. We also received some suggestions, including Dr. Kastner from our, our company that is helping us with our superintendent service, put us in contact with some candidates. We interviewed them, and then after, upon interviewing them, we decided to offer the position to Dr. Kastner. Dr. Kastner has been a superintendent in Albemarle County, and he has also served as an interim superintendent in Shenandoah County, and he comes highly recommended by the folks that I spoke with personally, and I think he will do a tremendous job for us for the next few months or several months, however long it ends up being. So, that is that. And so, we will have, Dr. Kastner will be in the school division near the end of the month to get his feet wet, to meet some of the staff, to meet with some of the staff and with Mrs. Blackburn, and then his first day of work will be October 1. All right. Any other new business that any board members would like to bring to the table?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
The principal at Christiansburg High School, Kevin Sears, has, if you've read the paper, is in a situation where he's made a decision that insignias that incite difficulties are not going to be used on cars in his parking lot. And it's causing him a little bit of difficulty, I believe. That's what I heard. And I think we ought to keep an eye on this as a board. He's, he's made this decision. People are going to him and saying, "Well, what about the other four schools?" Or, "What about the other schools?" And my question is that. What about the other schools? Because there's other people out there who are asking the same question, but in a different vein. And I think that this is something that the board possibly needs to discuss. Let's, I'd like to play it out, see what happens with the newspapers, because they've got hold of it. And once they get hold of something, they don't let go of it right away. Anyway, I just want to be, have the board to be aware that some situations are going on that are, could turn unpleasant, and we're, we may have to react to this.
I just have to say, it won't be the first time. So, I'd like to make sure that we are clear what our boundaries are as a school district. I'll just leave it at that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I agree. Any other comments?
Then I would just like to know if you are asking that we make Mr. King available at your next meeting, because he has given us some guidance, which I shared with you earlier, which was that the decision is made on the basis of whether an emblem, language, practice is a disruption in the school. And there are some of our schools in which there have been issues with a disruption in the school caused by an emblem, in this case Confederate flag. There are other of our schools within the division where there have not been any instances in which the emblem caused a disruption. So, I, I think we need clarity about whether you would like Mr. King to be here or not, because that has been his guidance
Right.
based on the constitutional interpretation.
I don't know about the rest of the group, but I'm aware of what the state says. Mr. King and I did have a conversation a couple of weeks ago in reference to this. Regardless, Mr. Sears has made a decision. I'm assuming that that's being reviewed by Mr. King now?
He is in line with his decision
Okay.
because CHS was a school in which they have had a disruption created by the emblem of the Confederate flag. So, all he did at this point is to make sure that students understood that that ban would apply to decals on their cars in the parking lots on school campuses. So, he has essentially just clarified that that extends to their vehicle when parked on the school campus.
Yeah, and I'm aware of that, okay? Thank you.
The, I think the definition, or part of the definition of a disruption is if there's fighting, right? And that has happened at Christiansburg High School and Blacksburg Middle School. But part of our charge is to create an environment where students are learning and there's not disruption. And that flag causes a lot of stress and upset to many of the students, white and black. So, I think that's where Mr. Ivors is talking about
Exactly.
as far as being a disruption and for how we can approach it. Been down this road before, and it was the fighting. And I think that's unfortunate that it would lead to physical confrontations when someone is feeling that upset about an emblem in the school system.
I, yes, yes. If, if I'm in a high school and something happens in that high school that really causes me discomfort, so I go to the administration and voice my feelings about that, I think that's going to be more productive than if I go up to the person and get into a physical confrontation with them. That is counterproductive completely, and I don't think the school system is looking for students to be counterproductive at all. I'm thinking that there may be people out there who feel the way I do and are fearful of voicing their feelings because they're the Lone Ranger. And I don't think that that's right. I think for them to have to get into confrontations or get into some sort of a, of a situation that honors what the state is looking for them to do is absolutely ludicrous.
And this is a great learning opportunity.
Yes.
So, maybe this is where we use our social justice work to start the conversation within our schools, with our students about this, because there's, can be nothing more powerful than have someone who you consider a friend tell you honestly about something that you're doing that is hurtful or causing them pain, causing them to fear.
Any other comments, board members? I think we may want to have Brad here anyway for that meeting, if I remember correctly. So, let's go ahead and have Brad.
I'm not going to be at that meeting. So, I would like to be a part of that conversation, but.
I think Brad may have to be here for other reasons anyway, so. Anything else? I, you know, with that, that is a, obviously, a very sensitive subject, and, you know, it's, it's one, too, that I've had discussions with Mr. King with as well, that, you know, we obviously have to be careful with the free speech side of it as well. So, we're, it's definitely one of those things that is a slippery slope, and we're going to have to walk, I think, very carefully on it.
Like I said, been down this road
Yeah.
understand what those boundaries are, and that's why I believe part of the way we can help the situation is to start the conversation.
Any announcements or informations any board members would like to make at this time? Other than Ms. Franklin just announcing she's not going to be at the next meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
All right. You see our upcoming school board meetings. Our next meeting will be October 6th, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.